Good evening and thank you for viewing the December 1st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the COVID-19 virus. New cases continue to be reported in Humboldt County. The city urges residents to get vaccinated as our best defense against the virus and the personal and economic impacts it has on our town. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goldstein?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged onto the Zoom meeting webinar, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. The clerk will unmute you and you will have two minutes to comment. You can also access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is time for public comment, city staff will request you to unmute and you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted and you will have two minutes to comment. So, item three is ceremonial matters. We have a proclamation in recognition of Go Slow, Watch the Road Campaign, and we will have Councilmember Schaefer reading that for us.
Okay. Proclamation in recognition of Go Slow, Watch the Road Campaign Kickoff for December 2021. Whereas Humboldt County ranked number one out of 58 counties for traffic collisions involving a pedestrian according to data in 2018, has fatal collision rates double the national average and nearly triple of those of California. And whereas effective transportation safety policies utilize a multifaceted approach including infrastructure development and improvements, enforcement of laws and education, and the personal responsibility and behavior of those who use streets. And whereas drivers who have an inherent responsibility to maintain a culture of respect and courtesy, avoid causing harm, and protect the community's most vulnerable residents. And whereas Humboldt County residents pride themselves on being values-driven, innovative, and proactive problem solvers who are responsive and responsible protectors of the community's residents and visitors. And whereas national statistics and local experience indicate that low-income people, people of color, older people, and people with disabilities are more likely to be killed by traffic collisions while walking or biking. And the countywide Traffic Safety Task Force is committed to addressing these tragic inequities. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes that safely navigating our streets and sidewalks is a cooperative activity and traffic collisions are not inevitable. The Go Slow, Watch the Road Campaign created by the Countywide Traffic Safety Task Force brings the City of Arcata together with other local communities in adopting the goal to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, health, and equitable mobility for all. Dated December 1st, 2021. And Mayor Stacy Atkins Salazar is actually going to sign the proclamation right now.
So I know we have Mayor Seaman who's going to be coming in to talk a little bit about this. So this is the very giant version of the proclamation. Do you want me to hold it? Okay. So I'm gonna sign it. All right. It's official. So please drive slow. And do we have Mayor Seaman on?
I am here. Thank you so much. I'm so glad that Arcata is joining us in just recognizing the importance of transportation safety. Humboldt County is, for some reason, really not great with traffic safety and number one for pedestrian injuries. And it started in Eureka because we do see a lot of it in Eureka, but certainly collisions do not end at the city lines. So we brought together this task force from the whole county. And so that giant proclamation that you just signed also has Deborah Garns from Riodell who's already made the proclamation and the Board of Supervisors. And we'll be seeing other cities join us to just commit to trying to make our people who use our roads, our pedestrians, our bicyclists, and even our drivers as safe as possible. Also, part of the campaign is to have road signs. They say, "Go slow, watch the road." People can put them in their lawns. They're just lawn signs and they're available for free. So I don't know if you guys know this, I dropped off a box at City Hall today. And people can get them for free. And if you want to call me or email me at sseaman@ci.eureka.ca.gov, we can get you as many free signs as you want. You can like plaster your neighborhood and remind people. There's actually a campaign in Eureka called Slow the F Down. And it has, they have been doing speed studies and it's been working. So if you remind people while they're driving fast to slow down, that sometimes they do it. That's what we're hoping for.
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor Seaman. So yeah, if you are interested, we will have those at City Hall. And it sounds like if we run out, we can get more. So thank you. Okay. Next, we have early communications. And this 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes and we can take up to seven speakers. So please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press *9 if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. Just checking, but I don't see any early oral communications. Okay. So that will move us to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have item A, which is our biweekly report on general warrants. B is to declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. C, reappoint Walt Geist to the Economic Development Committee for a term expiring September 30th, 2023. D, authorize the city manager and city attorney to finalize an independent contract agreement with Sinargro in the amount of $49,999 for de-watering of material in the covered drying beds and secondary digester at the water treatment facility. And E, approve memorandum of understanding between Cooperation Humboldt and the City of Arcata for Comunidad Unida del Norte de Arcata, or CUNA, Valley West Community Engagement, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Is there any council member who would like to remove an item?
Yeah, I'd like to remove item E, please.
Okay. Thank you. Any others? Is there any member of public or staff that would like to remove an item?
I see none. Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item E?
I move that we approve the consent calendar minus item E.
I second.
Okay. That was a motion by Councilmember Schaefer and a second by Councilmember Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. So let's go ahead and discuss item E.
Yeah, I just, I must've missed that one when I was looking at the agenda. I was just hoping I could learn a little bit about it.
Sure. Mayor and council, item before you tonight is a memorandum, a proposed memorandum of understanding for community and business engagement by the group CUNA. This was a project that was identified in your ARPA fund discussions to help Cooperation Humboldt continue the work that they have been engaged in in the Valley West neighborhood. So this is just the pilot, the first three months. And then we'll be reassessing. And the MOU is anticipated to extend the actual full three years of the ARPA funds that you have set aside for this project. But we just wanted to get it off the ground and we wanted you to see, even though it was a small amount of the contract because it was an ARPA project, we wanted you to see kind of the meat of the MOU and the strategy that they would be using in the Valley West area. But if you have specific questions, both Emily and Dilo are here as well.
That's great. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve item E.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve item E of the consent calendar by Councilmember Watson and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So next, we have old business. This is to consider approval of the old Arcata Road Rehabilitation and Pedestrian Bikeways Improvement Project. And can we please have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. I'm David Loyah, the Director of Community Development. And tonight I'll be presenting with Natra Katry, Director of Engineering. And we have our consultant, Misha Schwartz, represented by Misha Schwartz from GHD on tonight. Tonight, we are asking that you receive the staff report, accept public comment, if any, and then close the hearing pending recirculation of portions of the EIR. Very disappointed to report that we are not able to take action tonight. It was brought to our attention in a letter that we received by representatives from Bayside Cares that there was an impact to wetlands that we did not disclose in the original draft EIR. And as a result, we do need to recirculate at least that portion of the EIR. We'll do a thorough vetting of the rest of the EIR before making that decision. Just for a little bit of context, and I realize this is going to be, you know, a disappointment to many in the community who've expressed support for the project. But I want to, you know, defer to Natra's comments related to, you know, project timelines. But I do want to give you just a little bit of context for this. So I'll spend just a moment explaining the history of this. Earlier this year, the council was reviewing a mitigated negative declaration with mitigations to reduce impacts to less than significant, along with approval of the project. In that mitigated negative declaration, we had identified impacts to wetland areas. And there was a mitigation that was proposed, an area that was set aside for creating new wetlands to make up for the impact to those wetlands. The wetlands are effectively the ditches associated with the existing alignment of Jacoby Creek Road, which in order to accommodate the project would need to be filled and culberted. And despite the fact that they are, you know, not high-quality wetlands, they're still wetlands and we still need to mitigate them. That was identified in the MND. When the draft EIR was prepared, an updated wetland delineation was done and a new determination was made that identified that there were no wetland impacts. And it was our understanding through communications with GHD staff that that applied to the entire area that was associated with the wetland impacts in the mitigated negative declaration. And the draft EIR was drafted to reflect that, that there were no impacts to wetlands. We did receive a comment letter requesting clarification and identifying that there were impacts to wetlands that we hadn't addressed in the draft EIR. The final EIR that is in your packet tonight sort of ratified the determination, doubled down on the decision that there were no impacts to wetlands based on those earlier wetland findings. However, we received the communication today from representatives from Bayside Cares with a letter appended from a local wetland scientist who identified the impacts to these ditches along Jacoby Creek Road. And we verified that in fact those impacts are happening. And so the, you know, first thing I want to say is, you know, I appreciate the participation of Bayside Cares and that they brought this to our attention so that we can address it. And I also appreciate the efforts of others in the community who have put so much into this EIR. The process moving forward, because this new impact has been identified and because there are no mitigation measures now that would offset that impact, but that there are mitigation measures that could be included to offset that impact is that we need to recirculate that section of the EIR, put it out for public comment to the agencies and also to the public again. That'll be a 45-day circulation period. And then there are some timeframes around noticing and bringing it back to hearing. We're still working on a final timeline for that, but we believe that we can bring this back to the council for consideration in February of next year. And so that new section of the EIR will again incorporate the identified impacts to wetlands associated with the project and some mitigations that we know we can implement because they were included in the earlier mitigation monitoring reporting program for the mitigated negative declaration. I want to turn it over to Engineer Katry to explain the impact that this timing will have on the project, if any.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of public. I would just like to start with apologizing to the people who provided comments on the project and they were ready today to provide comments on the project. But the good news is that with this offset, the overall project schedule does not change significantly. We are still, we will be able to complete our environmental document, SEQA, by early next year, into February or by early March. We will be able to finish our design by end of the year. And still, as planned, we will be able to do the construction by 2023. So that was our original plan. Still it is. We were, I would say, not ahead of schedule. We are on time. It's not ideal, definitely. We are crunching the time and we are very close to the deadlines. But still, with this schedule that David just laid out and Misha maybe also laid out the schedule, we will be able to meet the project timeline and deadlines and funding at this time. So that's why I had to report today. And again, sorry, all the members who are lined up to provide comments on the project.
Yeah, I wanted to echo that. And I just wanted to turn it over to Misha with our GHD consultant to kind of talk about the process moving forward in terms of their commitment to assisting us to resolve this issue.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So yeah, as David had said, there was a revised wetland map completed under the purview of the resource agencies. And there's a small wetland area along Jacoby Creek Road that was no longer considered jurisdictional. And there was a disconnect between that wetland no longer being jurisdictional and then remaining wetlands that are in juxtaposed dishes with regards of the SEQA team and the design team. So that the assumption was incorrect, that there were no wetlands that were being impacted from construction activities. So to apologize for that, apologize to the council, apologize to staff, and particularly apologize to the public for, you know, not being ready where we had hoped to be. GHD is making this a priority. And we had four or five people involved this afternoon, meeting with city staff. And GHD is going to prepare a new draft EIR to recirculate on our own dime and preparing a schedule, the supply to Director Loyah and Natra, showing that timeline that we will need to meet and to ensure that some of your funding is going to be impacted. And so we'll be providing that schedule tomorrow. And we're making it a priority for our team and hope to recirculate the draft EIR with the specific sections within the next few weeks.
Thanks, Misha. So we are available to answer any questions that council may have about the project or the EIR, the environmental work, the public process. But I guess I would recommend that since we cannot certify the EIR tonight and we'll have to have a full, you know, formally noticed hearing on the item when we bring it back after the second circulation, you may choose to hold your questions until that time. But I know there are several public members who have been involved in this process and may wish to provide you comment tonight on it. And then lastly, I do want to, again, just apologize to the community. If we had been able to let you know any earlier that this, you know, shifting gears was going to happen, we absolutely would have. We literally were working up until the end of the day today to, you know, ensure that we were, you know, had an appropriate response and had the process outlined that we needed to for the council so we didn't have time to notify anyone else. Again, recognizing Bayside Cares for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Okay. So I mean, I guess the good news is at least it was caught ahead of time before we moved forward. So that is the glass half-full look on that. And again, apologies to the community because I know this project has been dragging on for quite a long time. And I think we were hoping to get some resolution on it, but we will soon. So is there, before we move to public comment, are there any members of council that have questions for any of our team regarding this?
Yeah, I have a couple I could get out of the way. Some of the communications, receiving an email with concerns about the project. One, I definitely received a lot of emails from community members in support of this project. So I just want to note that for the public. You know, seems like most emails I've received at this point have been in support of the project. But just a couple of questions. Received an email yesterday from Sean Armstrong. One of the questions was the definition of an expanded roadway. And the Bayside Roundabout did not meet the threshold of requiring a VMT analysis because a roundabout is not an expanded roadway. And so I just had a question for staff, you know, if they had a response to that, what the technical definition of an expanded roadway was.
I can take on that. I'll start with on that response. And David, if you want, you can complete that. The definition of expanding a road is we, the project does not need a VMT analysis because we are not adding traffic to the road. Yes, definitely, we are adding pavement and expanding the road, but we are not adding volume or we are not putting a housing project next to that which will add more traffic on the road. Hence, we will not need a VMT analysis for the project.
Thanks. And I don't want, you know, we did receive this letter from the law firm representing Bayside Cares. And there's a lot of stuff in it. I think, you know, since this is going to be pushed to February, there'll be time for the staff to respond to all this. But one question, yeah, one thing I just wanted to ask the staff, one of the concerns they had was that the city has not worked with the community, in example, the neighbors who would be most immediately impacted by the project, to explore alternatives and mitigation measures to address potentially significant project impacts. And I was just hoping that for the public, that the staff could, you know, just briefly outline all the work that went into, you know, getting community feedback and working with the community.
I can start on that too. And David, if you want, you can finish that also. So as you know, as the mayor mentioned, you know, this project has been on the books for a long time, since I would say 2012, when the project was initiated. And the reason it didn't go through because the neighborhood was not in support of the project at that time because we are just proposing to put some sidewalks and pavement. So in 2000, I would say 2016 or 15, at that time, project came back to TSC with complaints for speeding in that area. So with that, we took that, those comments seriously and we budgeted some money aside for a good planning process. With that in mind, we hired local consulting team to do a public outreach and get feedback on the, how the project should be moving and what should be the project. So with that in mind, we, we called it a design shared process at that time. And we, during the design shared process, we had multiple public meetings, I would say at least three public meetings, some pop-up demonstrations to come up with the alternatives. At the end of the design shared process, consultants and the staff came up with various alternatives. However, we had to move forward with the project to apply for funding for, at that time, it was an active transportation program. For that, we needed to select at least one alternative. So we brought the item to the council. I don't have a datum in front of me, but we brought those alternatives to the council and also the same presentation was presented at the TSC. They were in support of the project and the council was also in support of the project. And they picked one alternative, which was the project as defined in the EIR document, which includes paving the old Arcata Road and constructing a new roundabout at the intersection of old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek intersection. So those were the initial public comments we received and we addressed them and based on that, the project was developed and created. And even after doing that, two years ago, we had additional public meetings to get more feedback because we did receive some comments on our initial plans. And as of, I would say, prior to circulation of our SEQA document, we had one more public meeting where we received additional comments and we incorporated those in our environmental document. So those were, I would say, public comments we received and we incorporated and we developed the project based on that. David, you want to add more to that?
The only thing, oh, I'm sorry, Natra. The only thing I would add to that is that the, I wanted to draw your attention to packet page 35 where we address public comment and input. The environmental analysis was based on the 30% design. Environmental analysis needs to, you know, have enough design elements to understand what the project's impacts will be on the environment. But it doesn't require 100% design specification to evaluate the environmental impacts. And so there are still features that may become incorporated into part of the project that don't have an environmental impact or don't require additional, you know, environmental review, but do respond to the comments that we're hearing. Many of the comments, if you read the final EIR, you'll see that many of the comments are addressed by saying, look, this just isn't an environmental comment and so we're not going to address it further. That doesn't mean that those comments have no value. It just means that they don't have value for the environmental record, for the environmental review. They may have an impact on ultimately the 100% design. And so we've outlined a few, starting on packet page 35, of the responses to comments that weren't environmental concerns but do affect the project design, including parking, drainage, the roundabout design, and intersection enhancements, to name a few. And so, you know, as we move towards, you know, if the project is approved with the roundabout, as we move towards final design specification, there's still opportunity for the public to participate in the design. And I also wanted to point out that the EIR, one of the benefits of an EIR is that you can evaluate different alternatives. So the EIR does have an alternative that is an enhanced T-intersection that is also on the table for the council's review. And so I think the comments that we've received from the public, we've definitely tried to incorporate both into the project and to the environmental document.
Cool. Thanks so much, David, Natra. I know you've both put a ton of work into this and you've spent a lot of time responding to community concerns and I really appreciate that. You know, another issue that's come up over the last several months repeatedly is questions about Josh Wolfe. And I was just hoping, you know, for the benefit of the public and the council, could staff please talk a little bit about who Josh Wolfe is and what his role has been in this project?
Natra, maybe we should have, the city attorney, I think, has reviewed these specific concerns. So let's see if maybe Nancy wants to start. You're still muted, Nancy. Sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, this was some time ago that we looked at it. And I'm sorry, I'm not remembering in the moment exactly what our findings were, but we did look at it at great length. Josh Wolfe sits on the Transportation Safety Committee, the City Council appointed him to that committee, and he is also an employee of GHD, the consulting engineers that are working with the city on the environmental analysis and the environmental impact report. And I believe he's project manager with GHD, is that his title on this, on this project?
Yes, he is a project manager and a civil engineer, and he's helping with part of the environmental document. He's not working on fully on the environmental document, he's just assisting with some technical part of, like, drainage and traffic analysis.
Thank you. So we looked at whether there's a political reform act, financial conflict of interest, and determined that there is not, that would impact Josh Wolfe. And then we looked at whether there was a government code 1090 conflict of interest pertaining to contracts and whether, you know, the city would be prohibited in entering into a contract with GHD because Josh Wolfe is on one of the city's advisory committees. Government code 1090 prohibition applies to city council members, so that does not apply to Josh Wolfe. And then finally, we looked at the perception issues, and that is, you know, a judgment call, that is not black and white, that is something that, obviously, we are aware that some members of the community are concerned about his neutrality. However, the Transportation Safety Committee did not, as far as I understand, take up any specific approval or evaluation of this project. I think they had it presented to them as an informational item only, so they have not been in any judge, judgment-making decision role or advisory role on this project. Nature, maybe you can clarify that a little bit?
Yes, and that is correct, and they have not approved the project. And, you know, and it's our protocol, when there's a project, if a member is involved, be able to recuse themselves on the decision-making process, or approve the process.
So unless you have any further questions, that's, I think, as far as I can go tonight without going back and reviewing my notes and research from the time several months back.
Thank you very much. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Okay, do any other members of the council have anything?
Yep. I had a quick question, just to kind of add on to David, what you were saying before about kind of next steps for incorporating these design elements, because SEQA is not about design, it is about the environmental impacts. But just kind of what kind of timeline and kind of mechanism are we going to have, you know, to kind of discuss these design suggestions? Because I know we received a lot of emails of people who were generally in complete support, full support of the project, but maybe wanted to see an enhanced crosswalk, or maybe wanted to see, you know, a different location of a sidewalk, you know, that were small elements. So just kind of overall, could you give maybe a general timeline and mechanism of what that's gonna maybe look like for the public, at least to give input? And then I know we'll have the chance to kind of relay some of those concerns as well.
Yeah, if I could defer to Nature for that, because I think he'll have a better handle on how those suggestions will be incorporated?
Yes, definitely. So there are certain element of the work that needs definitely a complete EIR or environmental document, and David can help also on that part. But I would say, we have received multiple suggestions, comments, and on improvements to the project. One that comes to my mind, I would say, also listed on the staff report is, first is parking. Yes, definitely, parking is, and one of the items that was brought up multiple times from different members, as a part of the project, we are adding parking, especially in the area between Jacoby Creek School and Butterman Lane. Right now, people do park on the west side, but it's not designated parking. So as a part of the project, we will be enhancing that area and dedicating the parking areas with permeable pavers, and people will be able to park there, and there will be designated parking. And that will at least create 30 parking spots in that area. And that's not identified in the environmental document clearly, but I believe my understanding is that, that work like that does not need to have an environmental impact report for that. And a parking element is excluded from that, and David can clarify that after I'm done here. And then other portion of the parking is, south of Jacoby Creek School and Jacoby Creek Road intersection, there is no designated parking along Old Arcata Road on the west side. As a part of the project, as long as we have right-of-way and city, you know, right-of-way in that area, we will put parking in that area. Because right now, we have the 30% design, so we have not fully evaluated the width of the parking, the sidewalk, bike lanes, travel lanes. We know what we want, but we have not fully 100% designed, so there is room. Looking at the map, looks like there are certain locations on south of Jacoby Creek School and north of Jacoby Creek Road, there are room for enhancement to add parking, and those parking doesn't have to be a paved surface, it could be permeable surface, ditch, or some type of bio-swell, so that people are able to park on that area. Also, multiple times--
Nature, can I just interrupt you a minute? I mean, we can certainly go through each of those, but I, just to help, I think, clarify the question is, we recognize there are a lot of potential design alterations that are encompassed within the EIR that will be proposed. And I think the question is, how will the public know which of these ultimately get included? Like, will there be a draft 90% designs that then will be reviewed by the community again, and then go to the council? How will that process work so people that have given that input know what's been put in and what hasn't, and be able to have a chance to comment on that? What does that timeline look like?
Okay, yes, definitely. So the comments that we have received and we can incorporate, we will incorporate, and people will be able to see those drawings when we go to the 50% design. So as a part of the project, we discussed internally that, once we are done with environmental document, we will move to the 50% design, and then that will be on our website, and people will be able to see that. And I have personally communicated with most of the people that, whatever comments they have provided, if they are doable, we have told them that we will do that as we move forward with the design, and they will be able to see that in 50% design, then 90% design, and if we need to create 95%, we will create. But I believe 50% and 90% is enough time people get a chance to look at the drawings and see, and their suggestions are incorporated in the plans.
And then ultimately, the bid documents would include 100% design, that the council would take action on, right, Nature?
We, not on the design, it will come to the council or on bid award, but 100% doesn't come. But, you know, you can request for that, and we can bring it to you before we go for bidding, so that you can review and public can review bidding documents. It's not normal practice, but we can do that on this project based on the comments we have received. And, you know, it's our practice, if we get a good suggestion on the design, and it's doable, and it is covered in environmental document, we will definitely do that, and we will, you know, take that comment as a suggestion and incorporate it in the project. And if we have to make some amendment to environmental document, definitely, we will work with our environmental team and check with them, the suggestion that came on design, can that be done? If amendment is needed to the EIR or not EIR, but in environmental document, can we do that? If they say yes, it's doable by amendment, we will definitely consider that also.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any other questions?
I got another one I'll ask really quick. Got an email from a constituent that said that the final date for submitting comments to be included in the packet was November 19, 2021, but the final EIR wasn't made available until four days later, November 23, 2021. So is it that the draft EIR was available? And could you talk about the difference between the draft EIR and the final EIR?
Yeah, sure. The draft EIR had been circulated for a period of 45 days, and that did generate the comments that were addressed in the final EIR. There's no specific statutory timeframe that is required for release of a final EIR before the decision, and I will acknowledge that it was a fairly quick turnaround in terms of the timeframe between the 23rd, when the draft, when the final EIR was released, with the responses to comments, and then this hearing tonight. We did receive several letters on the final EIR, and I would say at this point, the issue is moot because we'll have at least another 60 days between now and when the final EIR can be certified, and so people have plenty of time to review those and make comments on them.
Thanks. I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we received quite a few questions from different members of the public, and since we do have time until February, I'll, you know, do the best I can to, you know, talk with staff directly and get some of those answers back.
Do you have any other further questions? Okay, so we will go ahead, and even though we won't be making a decision tonight, there are still probably people that would like to contribute public input. And so if we have any members of the public waiting for, to comment on this item, you will have three minutes to do that, and, yeah, so it's, are there any people that are wanting to speak? Yeah, our first speaker is Elizabeth, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't know that I'd be first. Hi. Let's see, can I put it on video, or does it matter? I'll just do it this way, you can hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Finger. I'm a 40-year-plus resident of Humboldt County, the Jacoby Creek watershed. I also am a teacher at Misswood Educational Center, which is Bayside Corners, directly adjacent to the proposed roundabout. And I do appreciate Netra and David coming to the school yesterday to answer some of our questions. I'm not here representing the school, but I did want to identify myself as a teacher there. A couple of my concerns are, it seems like from some members of the public I've spoken to and different media I've seen, it has, this is, project has been portrayed as either, you either support what is being proposed as the round, the project that includes the roundabout, or you don't in any way support improved safety in this area, and that's certainly not the case for me. I am not, I have some concerns about the roundabout being appropriate at that spot at the Jacoby Creek Road and Old Arcata Road intersection. I know that David did mention it, but I just wanted to emphasize that there is an alternative option, which is some of the parking near Jacoby Creek School, sidewalks, improved safety, some traffic calming measures, but still keeping a T-intersection there at Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek Road. I am glad that some of the wetlands issue came up. I wonder about the impacts of, in regards to flooding, how much that has been looked at, and how much the city has worked with the county in collaboration with examining these flooding issues. I can't see the screen there, so I don't know. How much, how much time do I still have?
Forty-five seconds.
Oh, goodness. Okay. The Jacoby Creek Land Trust has been awarded $340,000 from the Coastal Conservancy to study flooding patterns at Jacoby Creek. Humboldt County and the city of Arcata are major partners in that, and I'm just wondering how much, again, how much the flooding situation and potential increase in flooding or impact on flooding in the area, how much that has been incorporated into the study of this project? And when, it wasn't clear when you do the rewrite, when it gets to 50%, 90% design, does it go back to the city council for approval of that? Netra says if there's a good suggestion from the public, the comments--
Thank you so much for your comments, but that's, that's three minutes, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, our next commenter is call-in user three. You should be asked to be unmuted. Go ahead. Call-in user three. There you go, you're on, we can hear you.
Oh, hi, this is Kathleen Stanton, and I would just like to say that I think the city's alternative plan with an enhanced T-intersection is really a better vision for historic Bayside Corners. It keeps the current configuration of the road, but it narrows the lanes and it adds medians to slow traffic. Bayside Cares is also successfully working with the county on the straightaway that's south of the intersection of the old Arcata Road there at Jacoby Creek Road, and that's really where the speeding is happening. And the good news is that the county is going to reduce the speed on that straightaway from, like, Graham Road up to Jacoby Creek Road. It's currently 45 miles an hour, and they're going to reduce it to 35. That's going to be a big help, and we're also going to get some 15 mile-per-hour signs before you get to the Misswood School, because Jacoby Creek School has 15 mile-per-hour signs. Right now, we have 25 mile-per-hour signs. So there are some good things happening, and I think that the T-intersection, we can do a lot to slow traffic that way instead of having a roundabout. And we really don't have a traffic issue at Bayside Corners, only a speeding issue, which, as I said, we're addressing in consultation with the county. And the roundabout plan brings a busy, very busy old Arcata Road, 76 feet closer to the school there at the temperance hall. So it's within 35 feet of the front door, which I think is just really way too close to a school with the sensitive receptors and the kids and their playground there. And it's almost like saying to people, you know, what, how would you like to have a roundabout, the road of the roundabout, literally 35 feet from your front door? I don't think there are many people in the community that would want that, and we don't either. So you have to think about the fact that the road is moving to the east, like 65 feet. Currently, there's 111 feet between the school and the northbound road on Jacoby Creek, oh, old Arcata Road. And that's gonna, we're gonna, you know, it's gonna come 65 feet closer to be within 35 feet of the school. So I think that's really, really not a good thing for the school and the kids, and that makes me really sad to think that the city would allow something like that, that close to the school. And I also think it's really an adverse impact to the integrity of a national register-eligible building that basically says, you know, we don't care how close this very urban, huge pavement is going to come to the, to the building, and how it's gonna change the historic setting in the area. Is that it?
Yeah, it is. Thank you so much, Kathleen, for your comments. Maggie, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. This is Maggie Gaynor. Please, please, do not do this roundabout as it's currently designed to Bayside. It will not slow traffic in front of Jacoby Creek School after school hours. It will not slow traffic on the county side of old Arcata Road, where we have had pet deaths and even pedestrian deaths from out-of-control motorists over the years. We've monitored it. I'm in strong support of the safety improvements designed for the city of Arcata side of old Arcata Road. We know there are less invasive and less disruptive physical designs and actions to improve traffic safety in Bayside's historic district. The roundabout is proposed to be ridiculously close to a school and the oldest of Bayside's historic public buildings. I'm Maggie Gaynor. I've lived in Bayside since 1978. My education and work background is in community development. For 40 years, I've enjoyed active, being active in grassroots organizing, community improvements, and safety in Bayside. The city of Arcata has ongoing community outreach for residents' input for a gateway plan. The city is trying to help organize Valley West into a stronger neighborhood district. I would ask you to please give the same consideration to our community of Bayside. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Maggie.
All right, call in user two. You should hear an ask to unmute. Call in user two.
Good evening, City Council. This is this is Uriah Driscoll calling in. I maybe this has already been answered, but one one question I seems obvious is I'm not really quite clear on why Arcata feels the need to do a development outside the city limits. There is no community representation outside the city limits. And we've had some some similar issues up on Fickle Hill where some safety concerns should be addressed and can be addressed, but just aren't by listening to the local residents that will definitely be impacted. And the previous three callers I find very interesting. They have some very articulate input that I think needs to be addressed. But some of us county residents don't feel real represented by during these city projects. And I think that's that's kind of a trend that's been taking place with Arcata lately. And I think that there's plenty of projects, good projects, that could be happening within the city limits that should probably take the focus of of city staff rather than outside the city limits. When I think of this as I understand this is being called a gateway to Arcata project, but it's not even really in Arcata. And the entrances to Arcata, when I come in from, well, pick a side, it doesn't really matter north, south, or west, there's some serious, you know, issues that could be cleaned up on those actual gateways to Arcata. So I'd really encourage city staff or city council to direct staff to to focus within the city limits more so than outside, where there's a lot of difficulties that seem to be being created needlessly. That's all I've got for now, and well, we'll be chiming in in February if necessary. Thanks very much. Good night.
Thank you, Uriah.
All right, Mary, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. This is my first opportunity to speak in support of this project. And as a person who lives just three houses from the proposed roundabout and the existing intersection, I just want to share that my experience of the issues with traffic around that corner is very makes it very difficult for me to pull in and out of my driveway. It's dangerous for people to cross the road, and I'm really looking forward to having a wonderful crosswalk there. I'm fully in support of the roundabout due to the environmental benefits and advantages of a roundabout versus a T three-way stop. And I just want to let you know that this project has the full support of myself, the other residents of my house, and my daughter and son-in-law, whose daughter walks to school as me to Jacoby Creek every day down Jacoby Creek Road. So I really urge your support for the roundabout. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing those thoughts.
All right, our next speaker is Sue. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to assure the decision makers that I have attended all of the scoping meetings since 2016. I have read the published reports. I responded to the mitigated negative declaration. I read the draft E I R. I read the entire final E I R. And I've done all of these things before making my comments, sending my emails, so that I have, as I believe, done due diligence to every aspect that I can manage as a labor person to this project. Here is my comment. Ten thousand dilution cackling geese rise in unison, a tribute to their revival subsequent to the 1967 designation as an endangered species. Intermingling with the cloud of rising birds is the profile of a bald eagle, the probable cause for the geese lifting en masse from the grass-rich pastureland of Arcata Baylands and Restoration Project. A few days later, I spot a juvenile male harrier hawk hunting the marshlands of the adjacent pond, his unmistakable weaving and turning as he barely grazes the ground. I later see him at Fellowship Way, east on Jacoby Creek Road. He's hunting amongst the native interplanting at Redwood Roots Farm. Connectivity, vision. In stark contrast is this project, a creator of division where none existed, a throwback to petroleum and asphalt-dependent thinking unworthy of a community whose past leaders founded the Arcata wastewater and treatment plant and wildlife sanctuary, who initiated the often contentious grasslands protections for recovering illusions while promoting ecology at H S U. A haven for migratory birds, the comparatively dark skies of Humboldt support its percentage of the United States, 70% of bird species that migrate, and of those 80% who migrate at night, dependent upon darkness. As National Audubon calls upon municipal leaders to darken skies, this project calls for new streetlights as an established wildlife corridor, a retro project both for birds and those insects declining for lack of dark. Bayside wants better, doesn't Arcata? Trees are not merely for nesting birds. They are a protection, a roost, a source of food, or a perch from which to launch a laser-sharp hunt for a hungry sharpie, insects, caterpillars, spiders, blossoms, beauty. For Arcata's planners, they are expendable, if not part of a designated species or location. No loss as the chainsaws and shredders move in. This is petroleum-powered progress, one example to the youth who supported the teen speakers at COP26 just last month. As Germany implements solar-powered buses-
Sue, thank you so much. That's actually the end of your three minutes.
All right, our next speaker is Steve. Go ahead, Steve.
Steve McDonald.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I am in support of the roundabout. I live out Jacoby Creek Road, and I am on that intersection several times a week on many days. I'm riding my bike to school with my daughter on her bike and my other daughter on the back of my bike. And trying to move from Jacoby Creek Road onto Old Arcata Road, where that traffic is moving at a high rate of speed, is a dangerous corner, in my opinion. I much prefer when I have to continue on Old Arcata Road through the roundabouts, where I can take up the entire lane, and traffic does have to slow down to a very slow speed to go through it. On the way home from school, when I have to take a left from Old Arcata Road going on Jacoby Creek Road, that traffic coming in is coming in, I know the speed limit is 45. Even if it gets reduced to 35, that's a blind corner coming around there. And when traffic is moving at a high rate of speed and we're trying to take that left-hand turn, that is a dangerous intersection. And so if we are trying to promote people being able to ride their bikes, especially young children, a roundabout is a fantastic way to allow those kids and the parents that are going with them to be and feel safe in the roundabout. To finish up, I'm in full support of the roundabout. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is call in user four. If you're a new speaker, call in user four. All right, we're going to bring in, we'll come back, we'll try call in user four after Alice. Alice, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having this meeting tonight and allowing us to speak. I am a co-director, teacher, and parent and represent Misswood Educational Center. Our building, the Temperance Hall, has been here for over 130 years, serving as a beacon for the county's residents, fostering community and pastoral life. For the last 30 years, Misswood has shared this space, creating an alternative educational homeschooling environment. The key word here is home. Like many other people in this area, I chose to make Humboldt County my home because I wanted to be in a place that coexists with nature, not an urban city covered with concrete. We feel the same way at our school. It is our second home. During the school week, our children spend as much time or more here than they do awake at their own home. Having a roundabout as your next-door neighbor, your side yard, your welcome-home sign, your welcome-to-school sign, your welcome-to-the-neighborhood sign is not only discouraging for someone who loves a rural life, but it's soul-crushing for those of us who are striving for ways to give our planet a break from the continuous development, colonization, and urbanization that is rapidly threatening all of our lives. We believe that the objectives of the proposed roundabout can be efficiently fulfilled with the alternative plan. To improve the intersection safety at Old Arcata and Jacoby Creek Road, vehicles traveling north on Old Arcata, turning right at Jacoby Creek, will be forced to slow down when the mountable truck aprons are in place. Safer routes to school for students and families will also be created with designated sidewalks and crosswalks in the alternative plan. The speed is supposed to be decreased to 15 miles per hour when schoolchildren are present. And like Kathleen said, there is currently that proposed plan going in front of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors to decrease the speed limit zones from Old Arcata Road to the Bayside cutoff to be only 25 miles per hour. To calm traffic and to create a gateway at the southern entrance of Arcata, we can support Arcata's community vision of environmental stewardship and sustainability. Instead of having our gateway be a roundabout, we can celebrate the Wiaot culture. We can make a community space with native plants and thoughtfully designed signage, sculpture, and landscaping that would increase art throughout Arcata and be the example of diversity, equity, inclusion, stewardship, and sustainability that we are all striving to achieve. We, as community members at Misswood Educational Center, are urging you to approve the call in alternative instead of the roundabout proposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alice.
All right, we're going to try call in user four one more time. If you're a new caller, please go ahead.
This is Mark Delaney. Can anyone hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay, a couple of technical things that hope to keep my time. The delay between what's projected as video and conversation on telephone is about two minutes. You might want to do technical something about that. I'd just like you all to know, and I hope, the council, I appreciate those that came out to meet with us out of Bayside, but the City of Arcata has no standing in this project. It's not in your jurisdiction. You may as well be building in New Jersey. I don't understand what you're doing. The 106, section 106 process, which is cultural review, has not occurred because you seem to think there's two lead agencies. And under CEQA, which is this project's under CEQA, NIPA, and the National Story Preservation Act, there's only one lead agency. You can't have two lead agencies. The 106 cultural assessment, historic resource assessment has not occurred at all. You haven't met with us, you didn't talk with us, you didn't check out the buildings, nothing. I don't understand what's going on with the City of Arcata, but I do know there's four or five lawsuits coming your way based on the same process that you guys are using right now under community development. You need to talk to the communities that you're affecting. You can't just go out and affect communities without any recourse or reason. We don't live in Arcata. We can't vote for the city people. No one in their right mind would move a highway closer to a school. The noise, the pollution, the the possibility of a logging truck careening through a wood frame building and killing all the children is too great. Most people would realize that. But unfortunately, Arcata has decided to cut comment short. I don't know why you're doing three minutes tonight, because maybe you're listening to your own ordinance, but the last meetings were cut off at two minutes. Historic Design Review and Planning Commission, after a speech by the Community Development Director, that nobody needs to listen to what your opinion is because the council is totally responsible. The City Council of Arcata is not responsible for this project. Caltrans is. They're the lead agency, and you need to follow what they say, which is open and early public communication. You're using 2016 documents. All one was no project to maintain the road. You guys don't want the public to know that you're digging through, going to remove hundreds of cubic yards of material from a Wiaot village with burials. That's disturbing Native American burials. No one in their right mind would do that project. No one in their right mind would move a project closer to-
Thank you, Mark. That is actually, that's your three minutes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I understand that you guys hold a study session and a workshop, so you could actually talk to people-
All right, so Mark, we're going to move on to the next caller. Next speaker is Carla. Go ahead, Carla.
First of all, I want to thank you all for your patience and for your steadfastness. I have also been attending meetings. I am in full support of this project. I think it was back in 2010 when I first moved here and members were meeting, members of the community, and I live on Old Arcata Road. What is happening right now is not safe. And just knowing from my own experience, walking between where I live, a little bit north of Jacoby Creek School, to Jacoby Creek Road, where the grandparents of my kids live, we walk there all the time, and what is happening right now is not safe. And while some people think that the T stop might work, there's just so many people. That's not going to help with people turning left. That's not going to help slow traffic the way that the roundabout will. I have, there's two roundabouts going into town right now, and they work great. They're amazing. And I am in full support again, and this idea that there aren't ways to make this plan work with the current situation, it's, I don't believe that. I think there are a lot of solutions, and I'm sure that we can figure them out. And roundabouts are actually better for the environment. If you look at current research and you know what you're looking for, they are a very positive addition to any community. And so I am part of this community, and I do want this to happen. And I thank you again for all of your support and interest in getting this taken care of. And I hope it happens really soon. I'm very disappointed that you are not voting to approve this tonight. And it's it's technicalities. And there's more students that are going to be coming in because of Cal Poly status. Bayside cutoff is not going to be available anymore. Old Arcata Road is going to have more impacts. And while we can't pretend that we humans don't live here too, and we need to figure out safe ways for pedestrians and bicyclists to get around. So thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing this happen.
Thank you so much for your comments.
All right, next speaker is Jeanette. Go ahead, Jeanette.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Jeanette Wilson. I've lived in Bayside since 1985 and specifically off Highland Street for about the last 20 years. You know, I've heard people tonight say that they're completely in agreement with this plan, and others saying they're in partial agreement, and others saying they're they're fully against it. And I do think safety along Old Arcata Road is is high on everybody's list of, you know, an improvement that needs to be made. Tonight, I want to bring before you my greatest concern, and that is the impact on Highland Street. I live at the top of Highland Street, drive down the street several times a day sometimes, ride my bike down that street several times a day sometimes. And the narrowing of the roadway, like I walked down there tonight, envisioning two parked cars along that stretch- along that stretch from Old Arcata Road before the road curves to the left. Envisioning two parked cars, two moving cars, a sidewalk and then bicycles going, you know, two bicycles, one going towards our Old Arcata Road and one coming up the hill, basically. It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem, it's a safety concern that I have. It doesn't seem like there's enough space there. Already, when people come up the road from Arcata, from Old Arcata Road, they drive up and then they make that sweeping left-hand turn. People cut that curve very sharply. And there's been many incidents in the neighborhood. I've heard people talk about, boy, I was driving down the hill from up, you know, from up on the hill, driving down Highland and the person coming around that curve cut it so short that I had to stop my vehicle. My concern is, you know, the narrowing of the road, but also the, the issue of the immovable obstacle of the sidewalk wrapping around that curve. So if there's a sidewalk there with a six-inch curb, there's really no room for error. And if somebody who's coming up cuts it short, either a bicycle or a car going down is gonna be, you know, in a situation. Also, parents who drop their children off at old, excuse me, at Jacoby Creek School, they come up to the end right before the road curves to the left. I hope you can envision what I'm talking about. And they, they do a U-turn right there and often, more, more often than not, they do their U-turn as I am proceeding up the road and making.
Jeanette, I'm so sorry, but that's your three minutes for right now. Thank you so much. Next speaker is Sarah. Go ahead, Sarah.
That's my wife. I'm on her Zoom, Mike Dronkers, but Sarah is here and we both are in support of the project. We are in the affected community. We live in Bayside. We've had one kid graduate from Jacoby Creek School. We have another kid in Jacoby Creek School. And it's, it's pretty sketchy down there, as you know. Also, I'm a cyclist and as has been pointed out, the traffic on that stretch of road is absolutely bananas. People are coming in hot. And, and I look forward to that being mitigated. So we support the plan as it is and the sooner the better. And that's all we have to say.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is Jim. Go ahead, Jim. Jim Zollick, go ahead, Jim Zollick.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for listening to me tonight and all of us. So my name's Jim Zollick. I live at 1766 Old Arcata Road in Bayside with my wife and my dog. We're three doors down essentially from where the roundabout will be, just down from the post office. And, you know, there's been a lot of people that have spoke tonight and hopefully a lot more will. Clearly, there's sort of, you know, a couple of camps and I think one of the biggest issues is the roundabout, it seems to me from what I hear. And I think either people fall in, in support or opposed. I would, I would say from the work I've done, I've spoken with over 20 of my neighbors who are all in the immediate vicinity of, of the roundabout and, and the intersection there. And all of them are in very enthusiastic support of the roundabout. And 10 of those households are within a stone's throw of where the roundabout will be. People live right on that curve. And cars come around there at, at forty-five, fifty miles an hour. It's, you know, it is really unsafe. And people live in those households with, with kids to go to school and ride bikes, et cetera. You know, I know people said that, you know, there's an effort to slow traffic coming, coming from Eureka. But the fact of the matter is the only thing that's really gonna slow traffic there, I think effectively, is a roundabout. The, the T intersection, I feel, will not slow traffic. And in fact, it's gonna put a crosswalk across that intersection that essentially is gonna be playing chicken with pedestrians because it's a blind corner. People come flying around there and, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna be, you know, taking your, your life in your hands crossing that crosswalk. So, you know, I realize a lot of people have, have stated that the roundabout will, will, you know, ruin the, the community nature. It will, they talk about it of all kinds of concrete. The fact of the matter is right now, that intersection, I walk it almost every day with my dog going up Jacoby Creek Road. That intersection is a huge amount of asphalt and gravel and a chain link fence. There is nothing that feels like nature there. There's nothing that feels like community there. There's nothing that feels rural and, and bucolic like people make it out to be. It, it's, it isn't sort of a nasty intersection right now. And a roundabout, I think if people could just come together and embrace the idea of a roundabout, it could be done very nicely with, that would add green space to the middle of the roundabout. There could be a sign for welcoming people. It's gonna slow traffic down, which is the most welcoming thing we can do for people in, in the Bayside community, allowing people to safely walk and bicycle through our community, which is, you know, in, in, is, is helps with our, with our personal health. It helps with our climate health. It helps with keeping, you know, reducing accidents. The ceremonial matters this morning, this, this evening started out with the Go Slow, Watch the Road campaign. This project is, 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 you know, right in support of that, of that whole, you know, the whole vein of that. So.
Thank you so much for that. That's actually the end of three minutes, but we appreciate your comments.
Great. Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Colin. Oh. Colin ending in five, two, nine, four. Call-in user ending in five.
This is Peter German.
Go ahead.
Yeah. My name's Peter German. I live on Jacoby Creek Road and I have lived here for the last almost 40 years and seen a lot of roadway improvements between the city and, and Jacoby Creek. And I'm looking forward to seeing more. I see that the roundabouts that were put in at Buttermilk and other places along the road there had some opposition. I know the one at Union Street had some real opposition and I see that they are effective. I see that the traffic calming, they make left turning a lot safer. They make bicycles and pedestrians safer. So for those reasons, I'm looking forward to seeing great improvements on this stretch of Old Arcata Road.
Thank you so much. All right, our next speaker is Jim Moore. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi. You reading? Okay. I live on Jacoby Creek Road. In the last decade, I've spent about 2,000 hours walking, biking and driving the full length of the proposed project. My kids have gone to both Jacoby Creek Elementary and Mistwood. And I recently spent about seven hours counting cars and photographing speeders at the Jacoby Creek Road intersection and at the radar speed camera just south of Buttermilk Roundabout in order to better understand how roundabouts and speed signs influence local drivers. I had no objection to the roundabout presented during the 2017 charrette process, though I do note that it was deeply divisive, being both the most unpopular and the most popular alternative discussed. However, since that charrette presentation, the roundabout has more than doubled in size and this has created entirely new problems, including negative impacts at Mistwood School and the community hall. Noise, pollution, traffic risk are all pushed significantly closer to the school. With these changes, we should consider the benefits of the new roundabout compared with alternative two, improvements to the T intersection. During my five hours of observation, about one in four cars heading south from the roundabout at Buttermilk had sped up to at least 30 miles an hour within about 300 meters of the roundabout. The roundabout has a transitory effect helped by the speed bump, but it is brief. The good news is the majority of those speeding cars slowed down as soon as they saw the radar speed sign. It does have a real impact. But if signs work, why is the Jacoby Creek Road intersection a problem? It has a speed sign too, doesn't it? The existing signage for northbound Old Arcata Road is all either ambiguous or placed so that it isn't visible until cars are within 100 meters of the Jacoby Creek Road. The radar speed sign often doesn't register cars until they're actually in the intersection. The answer to why is the intersection problematic is at least partially that existing signage is woefully inadequate for the job. A roundabout would increase speeds of cars at the western end of Jacoby Creek Road with entries to the community hall, Mistwood Elementary, Stream Guys and the post office, all within 120 meters of the intersection. It's not clear how doing this will improve safety. It would force a transitory slowing on northbound cars, which is important, but approximately the same effect can be obtained with a combination of adequate signage, raised splitter islands and enhanced crosswalks in the enhanced T alternative. The signage at least could be in place by, by Christmas, which would improve safety years before the roundabout could ever be completed. All of us want safe roads, especially when there are two schools in the area. If this general problem can be solved equally well in either of two or more ways, one of which inflicts serious costs on a minority of citizens, decency demands we choose the less injurious.
That's actually three minutes, but thank you so much for your comments. All right, our next speaker is Gordon. Go ahead, Gordon.
Yeah, I, I have a question for the whole panel, which is how many times are we going to restart this debate? We had a charrette back in 2017. We had a couple hundred community members there from Bayside. We looked at the designs. They were, back then, there was an overwhelming vote in favor of keeping a roundabout at that, in, in line with the other roundabouts that we already have on Old Arcata Road. There's nothing even close to a roundabout when it comes to safety. That's been shown again and again all over the country. But instead of building the road, this is starting to feel like some kind of a sadistic game where we keep restarting the process and inviting in comments from people who don't live on Old Arcata Road, live far away from it, maybe some of them five or 10 miles from Old Arcata Road. I think there's a very, very strong need for this project in Bayside. It's a beautiful project. I love the way it looks. And we chose back in 2017, will you please build the project? That's it.
Thank you, Gordon. All right, our next speaker is Lyska. Sorry for pronouncing that wrong. Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Lyska Parrott and I have lived on Jacoby Creek Road for over 10 years. My son went to Jacoby Creek and rides his bike through that intersection often. I believe it is dangerous and I am in full support of a roundabout as is. I appreciate all the city does for this area in Bayside and I agree specifically with Jim Zollick that the current configuration is like gravel, chain link fence and asphalt, you know, not some bucolic park. And so I am in, just wanna voice that I'm in full support and I think it's a great project. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evan. Go ahead, Evan.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Evan Hatfield and my family lives in Bayside. My family includes two students currently at Jacoby Creek. One recent graduate who's at Arcata High and about to start learning how to drive and a Beagle mix. We bicycle, we walk. The children like to walk to Murphy's. We go to the post office. And with safety in mind and with full appreciation for the infrastructure that can support that, we absolutely support this plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Evan. All right, our next speaker is Jude. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing public input. I wanted to say a couple of things. One is that I lived here in Bayside when Union Street did not have a roundabout. It's a T intersection. It was extremely dangerous. There were many accidents until they put the roundabout in. The worst time of day was rush hour. We now have rush hour on Old Arcata Road. I live on Highland and I'm really familiar with the cars going back and forth along that stretch of road all day long, but especially during the rush hour. And Caltrans has been involved in this, in this, it's not just Arcata doing it. And in fact, Caltrans, when they analyzed the entire stretch of Old Arcata Road, starting at Myrtle Avenue a few years ago, gave the Jacoby Creek Road intersection a grade of F on an A to F scale. Within approximately 10 to 15 years from now, before the polytechnic and the climate refugees. Because of the, the increase in traffic and the projected increase in traffic as 101 starts to flood more often in winter and people hop over onto Old Arcata. Plus now we have the, the climate refugees, fire refugees and polytechnic, which is going to be creating even more of a rush hour. So it's well known, it's well proven all over the United States and virtually every state that roundabouts are far, far safer than T intersections. T intersections are notoriously dangerous. But about the environment, I, I have been an active birder in Humboldt for over 30 years and I have led literally hundreds of birding field trips for the local Audubon Society. And I would just like to put in a plug for the environment. Roundabouts have been shown over and over to be better for the environment because they cause less pollution, far less pollution, because there's, they almost eliminate deceleration and acceleration going around those curves. Cars don't ever have to come to a stop. So they don't have to accelerate from a stop, which produces a lot of emissions. And also they're good for the environment because they encourage bicycling or cyclists. And there are ever more and more cyclists coming out here, parents and children a lot on the weekends. And that is also good for the environment. Plus they encourage walking because they're safer and people feel safer crossing. So for many reasons, they're much better for the environment than a T intersection would be or any stop sign would be. So, and also I just want to say in my remaining seconds, however many there are, the Highland sidewalk will absolutely not narrow Highland Street. If you look at the existing 30 feet of sidewalk.
I'm really sorry, but that's actually your three minutes. So thank you. All right, our next speaker is Miriam. Go ahead, Miriam. Go ahead, Miriam. We should be able to hear you. You're unmuted. All right, I'm gonna bring in Christie or Bert or both.
Hi, Christie. We live at 1759 Old Arcata Road and I really appreciate everyone's input tonight. We are in full support of this project and I don't know if I have words to articulate how disappointed I feel that there's not going to be a vote tonight. There is an extreme dangerous speed problem from the Jacoby Creek School to the Jacoby Creek Old Arcata Road intersection. Don't have to, you know, beat that. I would be really curious also what the distance is from Jacoby Creek School Playground to the Old Arcata Road. I know it's a different intersection, but it's very, very close to those of us who have had kids there who walk and bike along there. It's just interesting, you know, concept and point. The other thing I just want to say is I, I'm sure all of us have traveled the Indianola Road, Old Arcata Road where it turns into Myrtle Avenue intersection and roundabout that was put in there and made that so much calmer, so much safer. And just think about that. Hold a vision in your mind of that safer, calmer traffic when you think about this. And thank you for mentioning the Union Street and Buttermilk Roundabouts. My last point, I just want to say, I'd just be curious about also as I see these cars and trucks and, and people flying northbound and southbound, because we live right here, on a daily basis. I'd be curious about the physics. I'd love for someone to study that now. And the way the road and intersection are and also the mathematics of what the physics would be with the roundabout and the slowed traffic. You know, I just, I'm thinking that way. And I want to thank everybody for their input and counsel for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll try to go to Miriam again.
Can you hear me this time?
We sure can. Perfect.
Okay, good. Thanks for.
Okay, good. Thanks for taking my comment. I live about a mile down Jacoby Creek Road and frequent the intersection on foot, bike, and car. I have two small children. And I will say that the hazards presented by the current intersection are one reason why I do not feel comfortable allowing my children to bike on their own to school. So it's a real impediment, and I do think a roundabout would make me feel much more comfortable. I am in full support of the project as a roundabout. I'll also say that I was inspired by the recent New York Times article about Carmel, Indiana, which is a town of about 100,000 people that has the most roundabouts than any other city in the country. They are showing a reduced injury accidents by 80% and the number of overall accident reduction by about 40%. So between the live saved, reduced injuries from crashes, and lower carbon emissions, I am in full support of a roundabout and would like to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Clara. Go ahead, Clara. You're still muted, Clara. Can you unmute? Perfect.
Hi, my name is Clara Sandra McDonald. I live a mile or so up Jacoby Creek Road, and I am in full support of this project. Roundabouts reduce the speed of traffic. They're safer for cyclists. They are safer for pedestrians. And there's lower emissions as a result of that. So I'm in full support of this project. And I'm also in support of all traffic calming measures along Old Arcata Road. And that's all really from my comments. I support this, and like it was said before, the sooner the better. And I hope this happens just as soon as it can possibly happen. Thanks so much for hearing our comments and for all your patience in this project.
Thank you. All right, before we get to our next speaker, the next two after the speaker at this point would be our last two, but they do appear to be repeat. So there's Kristi and Bert Colbert. So if that's Bert coming on, go ahead and keep your hand up. And then Mark Delaney, if you have a second speaker with you, go ahead and keep your hand up. Guelen, go ahead, is our next speaker.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. This is Guelen Paliaga. I've lived in the project area on and off for 38 years. I currently live along Old Arcata Road with my family, including two children. We walk and bike through the project area frequently. And I'm speaking in favor of the proposed project, including the roundabout. I do hear the concerns from certain individuals, particularly associated with the school at the corner there. And I hope that the design revisions and the 50% and 90% revisions can address some of those concerns through fencing and landscaping and other design elements that I think would be a huge improvement over the current chain link fence and gravel courtyard. So once again, I'm speaking in favor of the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then, let's see. Is Mark Delaney, is there a different speaker?
Yeah, my son submitted some comments. His comments were regarding the process, which has been extremely flawed, as you clearly see.
I'm sorry, is Mr. Delaney, is this Mr. Delaney?
That works for the GHP.
I'm going to have to stop you, Mr. Delaney, because you have already spoken.
Got to comment why he did not get to recuse himself. Like most of the other people that were involved in the project.
All right, so that was just another person who had already spoken. So right now, we're only taking first-time speakers. So let's move on to the next one. Thank you. I see no further speakers tonight on this item. All right, so again, thank you all. I know many of you are growing weary of this. It has been going on for a while. And I believe I can speak for all of us when we were hoping to have a vote and move forward in whatever fashion that would have turned out to be tonight. So we do share your sympathies for that. And we're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then we will be back. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. So next item on our agenda, we are still in old business, moving on to item B. And this is to introduce ordinance number 1553, which is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to purchasing procedures, Title II Administration, Chapter IV Fiscal Administration, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. So I believe we have a staff report from contract manager Danielle Alred.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is being brought back before you with minor changes made to the Purchasing Policies Ordinance that was presented at the November 17 council meeting. The primary modification reflects the revision that was suggested by local CFAC representative Richard Marks and that was encouraged by members of the council at that meeting, that revision being to incorporate text directly from Section 22032 of the Public Contract Code, which establishes the monetary limits that determine the manner in which public agency is subject to CUPCA may award contracts for public projects. There are other minor consistency changes throughout the document as well. And if the council decides to introduce ordinance number 1553 as presented, it would be returned for approval as a consent item at the next council meeting, and if approved, going to affect 30 days after. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Danielle. So do we have any questions or comments from council? So I just had one. I know that I wasn't here at the last meeting when you all discussed this and did bring it back and took it off the consent calendar. But I did have a person reach out to me with an email, and maybe you might have received the same one, just with some concern that we were raising the spending limit so much and just worried about the process of competitive bidding and such. So I just wondered if you had all talked about that at the last one, or if there was. I'm assuming that this is in response to the drastic spike that most of our services are costing and hasn't really increased on a normal trend for this time. But I just wanted to bring that up before we went into it.
Sure, yeah. So the most recent revision is raising the limits to match exactly what is listed in the Public Contract Code for public projects. And the previous ordinance that's in effect right now was adopted over 12 years ago. So during my previous staff report, I kind of mentioned about there have been a lot of instances in which considerable staff time and delays for projects have resulted from those lower purchasing limits. So we were trying to make those limits more consistent with state guidelines for public projects. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
No, it absolutely does. And the history that we haven't raised those limits in 12 years, I think speaks volumes to that, so that clears it up for me. So do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this item? I see no public comment on this item. Okay, so at this time, I can either take final comments or a motion from council.
I'll make a motion. I move to introduce ordinance number 1553, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to purchasing procedures, Title II Administration, Chapter IV Fiscal Administration, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Mayor Goldstein and a second by Councilmember Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So moving on to new business, we do need to appoint one new member to the Economic Development Committee for a term expiring September 30 of 2022. And we did interview three candidates earlier today. So go ahead and open that up to comments from the council.
Go ahead.
Okay. I felt like we had really wonderful candidates, and I want to thank you all so much for applying and interviewing. I felt that Amanda brought really wonderful experience from her connection to HSU and also her past experience. And I just wanted to talk that out with the council if having somebody who shares both the town perspective as well as the university perspective might offer a lot of really great insights for the committee.
I also thought she did a really good job. But out of the three candidates, I think my preference was Annalise. I really liked her working on a committee. It can be hard, the Economic Development Committee, I know. I've had some struggles keeping committee members and working together. And I was impressed with her service in the grand jury.
I think that Mr. Loya, at the beginning of this, really stressed that someone with business experience would be a good addition to the EDC. And I think Amanda really has some great experiences working with businesses. I was really impressed with her resume, so I would recommend Amanda as well.
Yeah, we had some great candidates. I would obviously feel comfortable with either of the ones we've spoken about tonight. Though, I did want to put my hat that I really would support appointing Annalise as well just because she has more stronger ties to the community and has been here longer and definitely is more knowledgeable of what is happening in Arcata and Humboldt County and has that connection. And I have also had the pleasure of working in some capacity with Annalisa through the Rotary Club and have seen her commitment to community and community service. And I think that she would just be a great candidate to serve on a committee locally.
Well, I thought both women were really qualified and amazing. So it looks like we have a decision to make. So I think we can't go wrong either way. So if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to appoint Amanda, I'm so sorry, I'm going to mispronounce this, I think, Pekanha Hickey, to the Economic Development Committee for a term expiring in September 30, 2022.
Did you have a preference, Stacy?
Well, honestly, I could go either way, really. I think that they both offer a different perspective. You know, I liked that Amanda, I think that a strength is that she is from out of the area, so that she does bring that. But also, Annalise being a part of our community is also very valuable. So I think we have a motion and.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so that is unanimous for Amanda, and thank you all for applying. Okay, so next, we have appointing one new member to our Transportation Safety Committee for a term expiring March 31 of 2023 or March 31 of 2024. We did interview two candidates on June 15, and we only appointed one of those. So the other candidate, Wendy Ring, is still interested in serving if that is the will of the council. So do we have any questions or comments from the council? Or if not, a motion to appoint her?
Sure, I'll make a motion to appoint Wendy Ring to the Transportation Safety Committee for a term expiring March 31, 2023 or March 31, 2024.
I'll second.
Let's go for 2024.
You're in there.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Wendy Ring by Councilmember Matthews and a second by Vice Mayor Goldstein. All in favor?
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. Thank you. And I did not ask for public comment. So do we have any delayed public comment on either one of those? Just double-checking, we did not have anybody with their hands up for those items. But just double-checking if anybody has public comment on our appointments, on new business appointments, and seeing none. Okay, my apologies. Next, this is a time for, again, for oral and written communications. And this time is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda, so that would be nothing that we have previously discussed this evening. Please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. When it is your time for public comment, you will be. When it is your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak.
First speaker is under call-in user eight, so you should hear something. Go ahead, call-in user.
Hi, this is Joanne McGary McGretta. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so I've been watching the whole meeting, but I've had to mute what I'm watching on YouTube and/or the thing because it is like delayed by minutes for what I'm hearing on my phone. So I just hope that there's a little bit of work done to bring that timing together better, because it's really confusing for those of us who aren't Zooming to see something happening so late compared to what I'm hearing on the phone. That was one comment I just wanted to make, which is also leads me to talking about the in-person meeting opportunities and when might we consider, even if it means members of the public only participating inside the buildings for their oral communication component, but I really would like to see the City of Arcata learn from the City of Eureka how they were able to successfully do in-person hybrid meetings. And so that's one issue I wanted to bring up. The second issue I wanted to bring up was the concept of our climate emergency declaration and hope that come 2022, we can be a city that is actively, verbally, visually declaring ourselves as recognizing the climate emergency in our community and in the world. And one of the things that would be wonderful to consider is putting an earth flag at the top of our flagpoles on our city buildings. And I know it's, you know, maybe just symbolic, but it does communicate something to the community that we really are actively urgently moving in this direction of acting on climate change. And I guess that's all I have to say right now. I found the roundabout discussion quite interesting because I just drove through that intersection today, but that's for another time. So thank you for listening to me, but I do hope you will be able to see me when I talk sometime soon in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
All right, our next speaker is Sheri, go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sheri and I've lived in Bayside for six years and am speaking today about State Bill SB9. SB9 was signed into law recently and will be going into effect in one month on January 1. The bill does away with single-family residential zoning in all incorporated cities in the state and does away with local control over the planning process. There is no affordability requirement and no developer responsibility for needed infrastructure improvements. SB9 allows any single-family residential lot to be split into two lots and along with the existing ADU law, up to eight units will be allowed on what used to be one lot. SB9 was promoted as a way for homeowners to provide infill housing and extra income for themselves, but no mortgager will allow lot splits, renovation of a financed home to a duplex, or the tear down of a financed home. So who can take advantage of SB9? Homeowners with no mortgage, homeowners who can obtain construction financing for up to eight units and who can house themselves somewhere during demolition and construction. How many Arcatans can afford that? Probably few, but guess who can afford it? Investors and developers. Upzoning increases property values and puts starter homes out of reach for anyone wanting to own a home in Arcata. The law is not even in effect yet, but prices per square foot for cottages in Arcata are up to 847 per square foot. Who can afford to buy at that cost? Certainly not anyone who needs to finance their home. No mortgager will lend on a house at that price, well over current market values, leaving these properties affordable only to developers. These real estate listings are obviously targeted at builders, not at starter home buyers. There are already websites advising homeowners, complete with cute graphics showing one house morphing into eight. The City of Arcata joined the League of California Cities in opposition to SB9, wanting to retain planning discretion at the city level. I would like to know how the city plans to respond to SB9. Other cities are enacting emergency ordinances before January 1 that state four means four, as spelled out in SB9, to keep one house from becoming eight houses. An emergency ordinance needs to be enacted before January 1 to head off developers ready to line up for permits on January 3. For more information, there are some leaders around the state who may be able to help advise you, such as Bill Brand, the mayor of Redondo Beach, Jovita Mendoza of the Brentwood City Council, or John Heath, the co-founder of the United Homeowners Association.
So that's actually your three minutes, but thank you very much.
And our next speaker is Patricia, go ahead, Patricia.
Yes, I live in the Gateway District Plan that is being planned here in my neighborhood. And I was a little complacent at first in realizing what was actually going on. Community members were never really given adequate notice, so when I finally realized what the scope was of the infill plan, I knocked on door-to-doors, door-to-door to both businesses and residents and was surprised that the majority of us had never heard about it. So I'm kind of asking to maybe, let's like discuss this a little bit, because I know there's a lot of concerns, especially with the businesses in the area, the light industrial and the residents, that this is going to be really a very invasive project for both the community, I mean, for all of the community of Arcata. It really doesn't really fit. So when I say invasive, invasive, I'm talking like eight-story apartment buildings with profoundly inadequate parking requirements. I'm worried about the infrastructure demands that demands on, you know, our water treatment plant that's having issues. And so, you know, there are emergency services. So there's too many concerns to really go over, but I'd really like to be able to have the community here be able to have a seat at a table. I really feel like we were never really adequately welcomed into the process and I think that shows by the fact that the vast majority of property owners have heard nothing about it until like a couple months ago. So anyways, I'm really looking forward to kind of being able to help bring infill into this area. I think it's welcomed, we'd love to see it. We just don't want to see it at the scale as like a large city scale that it's, you know, being presented as. And the draft just came out, I'm really happy to see the draft come out, because I've been kind of expecting it would be this bad. I didn't know it would be quite this bad, but I'm really hoping that us as a community can be included in this conversation. And anyways, I would look forward to talking with you and hopefully working with you and being given the opportunity to really express what this, you know, the possibilities of this neighborhood. And yeah, just come in with a seat at the table. So I guess I don't need to use my whole three minutes, you'll hear from me later on. And yeah, I thank you for all you do.
And thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, I'm seeing no other public comment for tonight.
Okay, so that moves us into our next agenda item, which are Council and Staff Reports. So starting with item A, can we please get an update on the status of our safe parking program?
Yeah, so update, we've had, Arcata House Partnership and the city have been doing some refinement around location and we toured a private property site just this week. I am expecting to see some draft lease terms for that property that I would be able to bring to the Council hopefully at your next meeting. We'll see what they look like when they come in. But the property would have at least power already onto the site and fencing already onto the site. And it's, you know, I'm not going to say it's turnkey, because it would take some infrastructure that we'd have to put in, but probably much less than any of the other sites that we've been looking at that don't have any infrastructure to support. So that's just sort of a quick update and then we'll be reviewing with the potential changes in the purchasing policy, how we want to go out. That project still will likely require a bid process around the operation of that. But we are trying to narrow down at least a site so that anybody interested in that then would be knowing which site they would potentially be operating on. And then what I did want to do was invite Director Lawyer just to talk briefly about the Gateway Plan, because we have released just a very preliminary draft. This is still the very beginning of the process for the last speaker. And then if he could just add in there, because I was looking for it and didn't find it, there's two other ways to try to participate. We are still doing tours of the site and I think you've got the next date you could share, David. And then we do have what's called meeting in a box, so we do have staff available that if you've got a group that would like to have a presentation around the Gateway Project, we'd be happy to come to you. So if there are folks certainly in a specific district or any neighborhood that would like the meeting in a box on the Gateway Plan, please reach out to David as well. But go ahead, David.
Thanks, Karen. And yeah, this is a very exciting point in time for me personally and professionally. We've been working on conceptually this plan for a number of years now and we actually have something tangible to share with the community. And so it's very exciting to me. I did want to just share a couple of quick resources with you and the community. It is on the internet, it's on our Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan webpage. And so if you go into your favorite web browser and you Google SERP, S-I-R-P, and Arcata, the first hit will be our Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan landing page, which will bring you to this page here. And if you click on the hyperlink here, that opens the document, so you can go through and review the entire document. It's out now and is available. You'll be able to review all of the sections in all of its, you know, glory or, you know, as you like it. So I'll stop my share and just kind of bring it back to the Council. I did want to emphasize that, yes, we are at the very beginning in a lot of ways of the public engagement. I know the last speaker was concerned that she and some of her neighbors maybe hadn't heard about it. It has been an ongoing public information campaign that my department, along with Katie, our communications person, have been really trying to push the information out there. And we are welcoming new voices to the conversation the whole time. And now that we have the draft document that's available for public review is really the time when we'll have something concrete to discuss, those specific policies, the specific measures that are in this document. And the Council, the Planning Commission, the committees, the community will all be able to review and comment on this. And so it's a really exciting time for me, I'm a little bit giddy, I don't know if you can tell. I'm just going to splash this page up here again real quick, because it does have information on upcoming engagement. Starting with December 9th at 5:00 p.m., we'll be holding a webinar. At that webinar, we're going to go through the document and go into breakout rooms and talk with the community about their, you know, their interests, their concerns, now that they've had a little bit of time to digest this. We're also doing some walking tours. If you go to the Gateway Plan page, there's some information about the walking tours that we'll be doing. The next one is on December 11th, starting at City Hall out front here at 11 o'clock. And those walking tours are about a mile long and they take about an hour to go through, so we'll be able to take folks on a walking tour now that they've seen the document itself. And then in addition, as City Manager Deemer had mentioned, we are happy to come and talk to groups. We can either do the formal meeting in a box where we go through some specific exercises or we can do something a little more informal like the, you know, like the town halls that we've been doing. And any stakeholder group that's of interest, any group of neighbors that have an interest or, you know, any agency or organization that's interested in learning more about this, we'd be more than happy to come and speak with you, tell you what we've done with the public comment that we've received, with the public input that we've received on this document or on this concept over the last couple of years and how we've conveyed that into this draft document. But I really want to stress that you are not too late to the party. We now have something concrete and tangible to review and now is a good time to get involved and engaged. It's a great opportunity to let your neighbors, your friends, your organizations that you work with know that this document is available and is under the city's review. The timeline for this review is important to understand, too. We're going to make a big push through December and January to, you know, take as much public comment on the document and, you know, modify the document, bring that information to the Planning Commission, the City Council, so that we can understand the direction we're going. But this is one of many amendments that we're making to the general plan and to other zoning changes that affect our long-range planning. And those changes will be happening to the general plan over the course of the next year. We'll be working with the community to update the general plan, including this new Gateway Area Plan. And the Council will actually be looking at it, the Planning Commission, the Council will actually be looking at it for decision-making when we get closer to the end of 2022, beginning of 2023. During that time, we'll be developing these refreshed documents as well as the Environmental Impact Report that will address some of the concerns that were raised around, you know, fire service, police service, you know, wastewater, water, all of those issues will be addressed at that time. So there's really at least one more year of public engagement on these documents. No one has lost an opportunity at this point to participate. So I'm going to stop now. I'm really excited about the release of this document, so you can probably tell.
So we do have, Mark Delaney does have his hand raised and it did come in, of course, after we closed public comment, given the conversation about delay. Our IT manager did come out and say that depending on the bandwidth of the phone that you're on, there can be a minute or two-minute delay on, you know, on the feed coming out of the YouTube or coming out of the city. Zoom would be the quickest way, be the most responsive timeframe to be hybrid in the meeting, but I wanted to give you the opportunity, if you wanted to add that public comment if he heard it late.
Yeah, let's go ahead and go back and we'll give him that three minutes of public comment, thank you. Yes, and this is, item's not on the agenda.
Good, you're giving me my three minutes back on the comments on the Rotary Project, the Roundabout Project. I appreciate that very much. I also have a comment.
So Mr. Delaney, this is for items not on the agenda, so you're totally welcome to speak for three minutes on something other than the Roundabout Project.
Good, so you know, I was cut off in the middle of my comments. I don't know what you heard or what you did not hear, but you're saying I cannot continue my comments, I appreciate that. On the record, I'm not allowed to continue my three minutes on the project comments. Thank you very much. I would like to comment on this project. I appreciate very much that Dave Lawyer recognizes that this is a special plan that's considered exactly the same as a general plan amendment. I appreciate it very much. And then as far as things not on the amendment, not on the agenda, I would like to have comment at the end when you're ready to hear it about the loans to wings under CDBG, because I'm kind of, I'm kind of curious what national objective this loan and subordination met. Thank you very much. Should I continue or are you just going to cut me?
No, no, so just to clarify, earlier you did receive your first three minutes of comments for the old Arcata Road Project. We did not allow you to comment a second time, because that would have opened a whole can of worms for the public. But yes, you can, you've got two minutes left and if you'd like to comment on the wing inflatables, please do.
On my end of the old Arcata project, I was cut off. It just dropped, I don't know what you heard, but I'll review the video. I don't think you heard my full three minutes of comment, but if you don't want to let me have my three minutes of comment, that is fine. I appreciate you saying that on the record and I want to tell you that I appreciate Dave Lawyer having the... And I want to tell you that I appreciate Dave Lawyer having a special plan and in concert with the same as the general plan amendment. But I also have another comment on CDBG regarding Wings' loan for half a million or a million and the subordination. I want to know what, under CDBG, you have to meet one of the three national objectives. And I want to know which of those objectives you are meeting with that loan and subordination. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So are there any other council and staff reports?
I'd like to say something quickly.
Sure.
I just wanted to say that once again, I'm really disappointed and saddened that the menorah on the plaza was defaced. I think that I implore her, Arcata, once again, to please do better. It is the season of wonder and light in Arcata right now. Let's treat each other with kindness and shop local.
Thank you, Meredith. I appreciate that comment as well. Changing gears a little bit, though. We have received some input that people want to hear more about our board. So I thought I'd just throw a couple of things out there that are not immediate updates, but things on the horizon that are very good for the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of being part of this organization, especially with the conversations and comments we've been getting a lot about climate change and that Humboldt County and the Redwood Coast Energy Authority really have been a leader, not only in California, in our country, and even internationally in starting offshore wind projects. And really that we have our ducks in a row and have been getting things done that are going to, hopefully, the properties that this or the area that this will be done on will be going to auction next year and we will be able to start motion on that. And even, we had some folks from Japan that inquired about, you know, what we have been doing and how we're doing it so well and the documents and the ideas and the consultants that RCA has. So I just wanted to put that out there as something that I am very proud of, that Humboldt County is leading the way on and the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. So go offshore wind.
I actually had two questions about the two staff reports that we received. I know it's really early in the safe parking program, so I'm not really expecting a yes on this, but I was wondering if there is a way for folks to kind of start applying or at least get some contact information to stay up to date, folks that would be interested in actually being part of it, living there or temporarily staying there? Something that we could direct folks to, hey, you know, hold on to this number or, you know, call this number and you can get on a waitlist, anything kind of like that?
I don't have anything set up yet, but I'm happy to look into that and see what we can do.
Awesome, thank you so much. May, I don't know if David's still on the line or not. My other question was for him.
He's here still, yep.
Okay, great. Also, congratulations, David. It's very exciting to have this going out and have something tangible to show the community. I just, I was hoping maybe you could kind of clarify for the public. I have gotten a couple of comments about the building height. And my understanding is that there's nothing in this about we are just going to, you know, go straight ahead with eight-story buildings. But I understand, you know, we have a specific look and feel to Arcata. And so I understand why folks would be feeling apprehensive. And so I was wondering if you could maybe just clarify for the public. No, we're not going to be building these like giant buildings. Like, yeah, I don't know. Maybe you could just speak to that a little bit. Thank you.
Sure. The, you know, first off, I want to emphasize that this is a draft plan and it's out for public review. It does allow for very large stature buildings. And that will only be in effect if the council adopts it. Right now, the district would allow for 45-foot-tall building on every single parcel. So that's approximately a four-and-a-half-story building on every single parcel in the district right now and today. So that tells you a little bit about how the effect of allowing something in your zoning code has an effect on the ground. And so the fact that we don't have nonstop 45-foot-tall buildings in the district right now speaks to the, you know, the nature of development and the market conditions driving those decisions. There's no question that this area has significant near blight conditions on many properties, that there's significant opportunity for redevelopment and that there are many larger parcels that would support larger stature buildings. But it also has many smaller-scale parcels. And so the idea of eight buildings.
Just like, before we get too deep into it, we just don't have this agendized as a staff report item. And I did want to share that at this point, and our agenda may be modified, but at this point, we do have this item teed up to have a discussion with the council in two weeks. So that would be another point of starting to get a lot of our questions answered.
Great, thank you both.
Well, it's understandable. This item has turned into a little bit of soup, but we're working our way through it. Councilmember Watson, did you have something?
Yeah. Recently, I completed a 28-day treatment program to focus on my mental wellness and other issues. And I wanted to thank the community and city council for their patience and understanding during my time away from my official duties. Seeking treatment was one of the best decisions I've ever made in my life. And receiving treatment allowed me to understand how past traumas in my life have impacted my mental health. I've decided to continue my service to this community that I love so much. The decision is based partly on the incredible amount of support I've received from friends, family, my peers in treatment, and the public. I also want to acknowledge the people in this room who have supported me with wisdom, advice, support, and comfort. I plan to continue to work for Arcata with an approach that honors my continuing commitment to the community and the mental wellness of myself and those I serve. I learned that mental health and self-care is something that we don't always prioritize as individuals and as a community. And it's too easy to look at somebody with mental health issues and try to tell them to just snap out of it or to stop using their mental health as an excuse for their problems. It's a serious problem that affects ourselves and our loved ones around us. And I hope that moving forward, I can use my position to help address ways to improve mental health and self-care. I want the community to know that I'm here for you if you're struggling with your own mental health issues. You can reach out to me any day, anytime, and I'll do my best to help connect you with the resources you need. In the coming weeks, I'm planning to meet with community leaders and health professionals to discuss potential ways to advance expansion of mental health services countywide. Thank you again to everyone who supported me.
Okay, do we have any other council reports? Okay, with that, I believe we are adjourned. So thank you all very much. Good evening.